Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
We're calling to order the select board meeting on Monday at 6:00 PM on December 7 via Microsoft Team. I need a motion to adopt the agenda and there is one addition and that under the highway for other is the generator contract. So can we have a motion to accept the generator as amended?
I'll move.
All right, good.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, none opposed? Okay, the next item is the minutes. So the first one is the 16th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of Monday, November 6?
I got a couple corrections.
Go ahead, Alan.
On number 10, school union needs an N. And under 11, we gotta put an S at the end to say it should be.
Yep.
It's the only ones I've found on that one.
I've got, I've got one on that. It's in paragraph 10, probably about maybe three quarters of the way down. It goes on about the small school funding opportunities now missed. Then it goes into ideas and how to from the entity.
How to form, yeah. Okay, I got it.
That, okay, that's what I got.
Do we have any others? If not, a motion to accept the minutes, amended minutes of the 16th.
Motion to accept the minutes of the 16th is corrected.
All right, John seconded it.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next set of minutes is the...
We made timeout. Was there an opposed to that?
Was there opposed? No. Was there, Alan? Did you oppose? No, I didn't hear it. Okay, the next one is the minutes on Thursday, November 19 via Microsoft Team. Do we have any additions or corrections to that?
I've got a couple on that one.
Go ahead, Alan.
On number 3, in that first sentence, pro offered, I think it should just be bid offered by. And then in that, also in 3...
Wait just a second. Wait, the third sentence, I don't know where you are.
The third paragraph.
Number 3, the very first sentence, act on the bid pro offered by Longview. I think it should be...
No, that's proffered. That's a word.
Done the bid offered by Longview.
No, proffered.
Okay.
No, the verb is proffered. P-R-O-F-F-E-R-D. They proposed the offer. It's called proffered.
Okay. Looked it up in the dictionary, well, Maureen did, she couldn't find it, so.
Okay.
It's a legal term.
Yeah, right.
It's a guess.
And also?
The next one is also in 3.
You're breaking in enough.
Yeah, Alan, you're breaking in.
You're frozen.
Alan, you're frozen.
In 3, down at the bottom, in the last sentence. Might quite getting out to the shop, I guess.
Alan, if you shut your video off, your audio will come through better.
I think, I think what Alan's trying to put across, I've got the same thing in the last sentence.
Okay, I see.
It's working now?
It probably should be firewood rather than sawlogs, I think.
That's correct. Should be firewood logs.
Okay.
Okay.
And it should be firewood, I think, rather than sawlog.
Okay. Any other corrections, Alan?
Well, then that's where it says had not yet removed the logs, had not removed the firewood. Yes. And number 4...
Well, there isn't any firewood up there. It's all logs. Timeout. There's only logs there, Alan. There is no firewood up there.
But they're technically not sawlogs. They're just log length.
Those are, those are log length firewood. They're, they're not sawlogs.
Not sawlog.
Okay, I'll put firewood logs in.
Okay.
They're logs.
But there's a difference.
There's a difference.
Because sawlogs are worth a lot more money than firewood logs.
No, I understand that, but what's up there is logs.
But firewood logs, let's not worry about little semantics. Firewood logs, everybody agree with that, it's all right.
I call them both places, I put firewood logs.
Okay. Alan, go ahead. What else?
Oh, the very last thing on number 4, health officer new amount was set. Don't think that reflects what was really took place. The new, the health officer's amount was discussed and in my mind, and I think at least one other board member's mind, that was contingent on the quality or the thoroughness of the written investigations or the follow-up paperwork documentation, which we all know is important for that position. So, at least I, maybe I thought one was proposed but not approved pending the quality of the reports.
Yeah, I remember that. That we did discuss that.
Do you remember as I say?
Yes, I believe so, Alan.
I remember the discussion, but I don't remember the, the pending. I know that we discussed that it should be done, but I don't remember it being pending.
Yeah, it wasn't pending on, on his reports, that he should be doing his reports.
Yes, exactly. That's what I remember.
That's the way I remember too.
That's how I remember it, with the way Kathy said. It was approved, but he's got to do the reports, of which I have talked to him about, and he will do that.
I, I'd like you to review, I'd like you to go back and look at the minutes, or actually look at the film footage. I, I believe I'm correct.
Okay. Okay, could we do that, could we do that during the week, Alan, and then correct it and talk about it next time, or do you want to stop and now?
I won't. We will not approve these minutes until I've looked at it.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the minutes will just hold till next, to the next board meeting, okay? Okay, and then we'll get a, we'll get a definitive situation out of that one. Okay. The warrants, everybody signed the warrants, I know. Highway, Danny? The conclusions of the COVID co-op discussion and plan for implementation with the contractors, I believe? Or was that, did I miss?
I'm not sure what the first one is. What is that supposed to be for, Bill? The first one in the highway report?
The conclusion reached by the COVID co-op discussion and a plan for implementation, which, which is, I mean, we can discuss that whole thing and the whole thing goes into the second meeting.
Okay. It all rolls together. It's all really one thing then, right?
Right, yes.
I, I think at that meeting that we had, we kind of figured out that we'd have the private contractors. I think, I haven't heard for sure, but I think all the contractors agreed to the contract. I don't know if you guys have seen that, that Bill wrote up to help us out. I think that's the conclusion of that.
There was, there was, there was an update today where the contractors, the V L C T, I think, wanted a $2 million liability policy and I think Bill made an observational change that we haven't accepted yet, be a million and, million and two million, which most of the contractors already have, I believe.
Yes, all the contractors have that amount and in addition to that, you haven't approved any contract.
No, we haven't. The contract was set out, I think, for today or whenever, and we'll prove, I guess we'll approve that at the next board meeting, but if anybody has any questions about it or discussions, and Danny, if you're happy with it, and Amber, you're still on there, I don't know who else is on there, but are you guys happy with, with the, with the contract?
Yeah.
I am.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't know how all the legal stuff for the insurance and stuff goes, but what we talked about and everything, I'm happy with it. I haven't talked to all the contractors since that meeting, but I think if they're good with that contract and paperwork, we all had a good understanding that night, we had to meet and what we were really looking for. And it's going to be kind of a trial and error thing if it, if it happens. Hopefully it doesn't. But I think with the three that we got, I think, you know, they all know the town very well. Get it worked. And I think any three of them are capable, if they have to run one of our trucks or something to plow with, I think they can.
John, you had something you said?
No, I just agree with Danny that I, I think it's well-written and I, I think that all the contractors agree with it.
If anything, I mean, Bill and I've talked about it, you know, it's, it's really, it's complicated to read the 14 pages or whatever, but it's all just the legal stuff for the, that you have to do and I think we go from there with them.
Well, the meat of the contract is what the hourly rates and all those kinds of stuff. And if everybody agrees with that, basically the rest of the stuff is all boilerplate anyway.
Right, and all them, all them numbers, you know, we put in numbers and they talk back to us. So I know Bill made changes kind of with what the contractor said and, you know, so Bill changed it to, so we could kind of get an agreeance with the three and I think we all agree with them rates now as far as the contractors. It's up to you guys if you agree with it. Kind of in a hard spot not to agree with them. It's, it's what we got, you know, I mean, it's, you got three local people that know the roads and that's, that is the biggest part. If I see that we, the highway crews out, that you take a strange contractor in there, you never, never get anything done. You won't get it accomplished. We dealt with that during Irene with people that had never been in the town, trying to give them a map and I think you got the three that should be the ones that cover for us if it's needed.
Well, I'll make a motion, we approve the contract that is written.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, I, I think Danny's absolutely right. I think that the three contractors know all the roads in Grafton, they know how to get there, they know what it is, and I, I don't think we could have a better group of people who could fill in in event that catastrophe does happen.
I, I agree with the concept. I agree with the whole thing. I agree 100% with what Danny said, but, I mean, I got this thing on my email and I opened it up an hour ago. I haven't looked at those pages. I'll, I'll agree with exactly what Danny said, but I don't know if I can vote, I haven't read all that.
It's complicated.
It was sent last week. It was sent to you last week.
I know.
And the whole idea was that we would discuss it tonight, so if it, if we have a problem this weekend, I don't know that, I mean, you guys can do what you want, but I don't think it's a good idea to wait two weeks, but you can.
Well, I don't either, but I'm just saying, I just got it today.
Well, it was sent last week. The only thing I changed today was the, was the two and four million of the liability insurance to one and two and the, and the automobile. That's all.
I questioned, I questioned about it last week and as a matter of fact, you wrote back to me and said you didn't need to see it because it's only a draft.
I didn't give...
That was from you, Bill. You said you guys...
I know, but I, that was early in, that was early in the week, but once they all agreed to it, I sent it to you guys.
I didn't see it.
I didn't either.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor, so, I mean, if you, if you feel, you know, obviously if you feel uncomfortable, you can vote against. I mean, basically the, the meat of the contract is the hourly rate and, and those kinds of things, that all the stuff is, all the other stuff is boilerplate and if you agree with, with the one and two million dollars, which all the contractors have, none of the contracts have two and four, which I think is unreasonable anyway. The rest of the contract, you can read it, but it's all, it's just legalese, basically. The meat of the contract is what they're going to do and how much you're going to get paid and who's going to...
Right, saying what, what we expect of them, that they're working for the town, they don't do any private work while they're on the clock with the town. And then it sets the rate stand, which the rates, I think we went over for ours, equipment of $100 an hour if they're running their truck with a plow and a sander and 150 if it's a loader. And I think the hourly rate, we had put in, we, Bill and I discussed it and we put in $30 an hour and we got word back that, you know, they're actually, they, they pay more than that, they bill out more than that for their own work. And that's why we sent it to the contractors to get their input on it, so we raised it to what they said they bill at, and it wasn't actually what they totally billed at. We hit something in the middle, you know, some were saying 45s and we're saying 55, so I think, I'm pretty sure it says $50 an hour if they're running our equipment. I know that one of the contractors said that he really, he just don't want to run our equipment just because he don't, if, if something happened, he'd feel terrible. And, you know, I, I hope they don't have to run our stuff. I'm, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that we don't have to even deal with this, really.
No, I...
That's really the most of that contract, other than the boilerplate stuff like Joe was saying.
Yeah, that's, I just haven't had a chance to look at it. I agree with everything.
Yeah.
If everybody agrees with it, let's move on.
Would we table it from now and call an emergency meeting if we needed to do it before the next meeting? That would allow people...
You've got enough people that's going to vote for it anyway.
To read it first?
Well, we, we have a motion on the floor.
Right.
If there's any, now any further discussion, let's take a vote and see where we are. If it gets voted down, then we'll have to deal with something else. If it gets voted for, then we move on. So, you know, John, you say yea or nay?
Yeah, yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Stan?
I'll just abstain.
Okay, and Alan?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. So four, four and one abstention. Danny, have anything else on that?
No, I, I think that kind of winds up both the two things. Other stuff is, you know, this weekend we had that rain turned to snow, certain places you see, you know, Wyndham we had snow, the other places is mostly rain. Had a lot of, I think we, I went in three times because of either tree limbs down or because of salting and then the guys, I had come in one Saturday, Sunday afternoon, I guess, to sand a couple of the roads, but nothing too bad, fires any trees or damage Everything is ready to go. The new truck, I talked to the company today, they're waiting on the dump body to come in, which I was told earlier on, all that stuff was there, so I questioned that. Why, why has things changed now? So I don't know when the new truck will come in. Hopefully we don't have too many issues with the old one from now until whenever. I think, way as cold as it is, I think we're pretty much done doing covert. I was hoping to do a two more covert, but I think we're pretty much done with that thought now. I don't, I don't think of anything else that needs to be done right now.
I said, I, I had to go over to Manchester on Sunday and wind them proud.
Yeah, it was close on our end. I mean, as you went up Wyndham Hill there, you know, it switched over. I ended up going, I went in and salted about, I guess it was, I'd have to look at my records. I keep records of every storm. I think it was about quarter of seven is when I went in and salted. I waited as long as I could because the temperature was supposed to drop and I got sick of waiting, really. So I went in and salted them and it, it's hard with these small storms. You can see the roads are a little white from the salt residue. I salted all 18 miles of our blacktop with literally three yards of salt and that's what you see on the road. So I mean, that's, it's not a lot of material for that many miles, but when you don't have the moisture, boy, it does sure turn the roads white and it looks terrible. I, I don't like, these little storms are more expensive than plowing a six-inch storm, I think.
Well, when I was in Manchester, I went the back way, I had to go up outside to pass Man, Manchester down at Bennington area and the roads in the back roads, they were absolutely white. They must have used, I don't know how much salt they used in Manchester and there was no snow in the ground.
Yeah. I, I see today, we went around, it's just, I mean, you ever see my time car, it's, every day it seems like all we're doing is checking roads because of the way the wind's been blowing and stuff like that. And somebody went off up Wyndham on one of the shack corners after we had sanded. They, they must be flying up through there. They had, definitely had to have a record to get them back in the road, but I never got any calls on it.
Well, either they're flying or they have summer tires on and they're boldly...
Yeah, I, I don't know. I see it today there where the marks were and I was kind of shocked because the corners are sanded up really good, so.
Flatlander.
Hopefully, they just need to slow down a little bit.
You got it.
We're, we're trying, you know, just because of the way everything is, I'm trying to keep everything to the minimal so that we're not using a lot of sand and a lot of salt. I mean, it's just the beginning so far, so. There'll be a lot of shop time and just checking roads and I know I've been having them haul a little bit of gravel in just to have it ready for, if we have a bad mud season. They've been crushing there over at Eastman Sand and Gravel, so I got some to mix with the material that we had there already. Haven't been buying much of the sand in yet. We, we're pretty good on sand right now. Some of the stuff, I just go according to what I have in the budget, you know, the material doesn't go bad, so if I can get a good deal on it and there's not a lot of stuff to do at certain times of the year, I have them trucking material and we stockpile. We did get, I don't know if anybody's been up, we did mulch the fire pond all in last week, that's all been done. Keep having the cold temperatures, I would think that would freeze up enough for Mark to get the firewood out of there.
Have you talked to them at all about that?
I haven't seen Mark because the frost is only a couple inches right now, so it never support a log truck.
Right.
And like, and then Friday I see, you know, they're talking 40 degrees again.
Yeah, it have to happen on Thursday, right?
So, I, I think there's plenty of time. I don't know when they're planning on logging it, but I think that he can get it out of there before they go in there and start doing their part with no problem.
Did they, they said they're waiting on the, did they give you any kind of timeframe on the new truck? Any, any real information?
No, they wouldn't. Nope.
Okay, if there's nothing else for Danny, the other item is the, that we stuck in here is the generator contract. And I guess everybody had, had seen it or have you seen it? I think Bill set it out. I read it today at the office and it went up 3%.
Bill, Will, what, what one did we do? Did we do the two times a year they come for the 600 and something or did we do the $400 one?
Pretty sure we did the four, the, the lesser one in...
Um, I, I'd like to see you guys actually go with the two times. It's starting to get older. Today actually is the first time since we've had it, I had to call them because we've had, it's spitting out some codes on generator lockdown. It wouldn't start on its own. I could manually start it, but it won't do it on its own. There's a red light flashing on the converter box, I guess, that switches it over in the shop. So I know they're coming tomorrow, so what's that, going on three years old now? I know they, they're not cheap when you call them to come, so if it covers more, it might be wise to spend the extra $200 and have to pay them for coming out more times to check things.
It really doesn't cover more, it just covers the same thing twice.
I got a question. What is the generator at the school run on?
Propane.
Diesel. I think the school one is diesel fuel.
No, it's not.
No, I, I think it's propane and that's why if you, if you look at your contract, it says, "Check the oil and diesel analysis. If it's run by propane, they ought to get that contract changed to propane."
I think you better check that. I, I thought that was diesel.
If it's diesel, who fills it?
No, it's, it's propane.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. I, I helped put it in, so I, so I wondered.
Yeah, I can't imagine that being diesel.
No.
So, that contract, you ought to just tell them to change the, where it says air, oil and diesel fuel analysis.
Maybe it'll be cheaper.
Hey, John, I, I just think those are, those are sort of boilerplate contracts. They're not specific to a generator. And if you even look at little small ones like a 12 KW, it'll say, you know, possibly, you know, change other filters. If that was a diesel, you wouldn't have spark plugs, you know, stuff like that. I just think it's a boiler, it's kind of a boilerplate thing.
I understand, but if it's not diesel, why don't it just, we put propane in it while we're doing it?
Yeah, I know.
I'll ask him.
Okay.
My, my only question with that, Bill, is under program two, it states the Vermont state inspection. If we only do one, is that Vermont state inspection included in program one? We've never done two on those.
It says if required.
Well, the one for the school is required. You have to have a sticker on that one.
I think it would be required even at the town garage. I mean, they had all their air tanks and everything they have to check?
I don't know. You, you would, it's on, they usually put on the transfer panel up on the second floor if it's, if it's a state inspected, it'll be on that, I think.
Yeah.
I don't think they, I don't think they sticker that one, but they do the one at the school.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I was up there today, I don't remember seeing a sticker on that.
No, I don't think the one at the town shed is stickered, but the one at the school is. So my only thought is I wonder why they only have that under program two and not under program one.
I don't think it's...
$100 for the sticker. That goes to the state.
Yeah, Stan, I don't, I think when we looked into this last year about getting the different, some bids, I believe that the one at the garage doesn't require a state inspection.
No, I don't think it does.
No.
I can ask him tomorrow, the guy, the technician, he ought to know.
Yeah, he'll know.
Well, if we're going to go with it, then have him do the, do the annual service tomorrow.
I, I don't, I looked on it, I can't remember the date, but it wasn't that long ago that they did that service. I don't think it's due until next summer.
Yeah, they were just there, they called, they were just there, maybe five and six weeks ago, maybe.
Oh, it's longer than that. They were, they're longer to go than that for the town garage, but I know it's not due. There's only, I think, I'm trying to remember because I was, it has a computer screen on the generator and I think it has like a total of like 147 hours on it, is all it's got. But I know every Monday morning at 7 o'clock, it does its test run and this morning, it, it didn't do it and I went out and the computer, there's a little screen on it, said it was locked out. So, I could do it manually, but I called them to come and check it and see what's going on with it.
Well, I guess the big question is, do you want to do a one visit or a two, two visits, as Danny is requesting?
Well, I guess Stan is saying it's all the same thing, they're just coming a second time to look at it and it's pointless.
I mean, it's, the second time, it's like a, a critical area type of thing, if, maybe if there's medical equipment involved or something like that where it becomes a critical thing.
Right.
Otherwise, it's just sort of a recap of the first one.
Yeah, then no, I don't, I don't see any point in that, not for 200 more.
I make a motion that we, we do program one. I make a motion that we do, you, we do Program One.
It's a backup for both.
Okay. And he, and 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 I, I would add to that motion that Bill uh, talks to them about this diesel versus propane or whatever.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I I agree with Stan though. That's, that's just, they're, they're just written for whatever generator they're dealing with. The first page.
All right. Okay, so any other discussion on the generator contract?
Uh, who was second, please?
Um, I I believe it was.
I did.
Alan.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of accepting the, the one contract for one year for the, your center, just s- service of the generator, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, will you authorize me to sign it?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um. Clerk and Treasurer, are you on, Kim?
I'm on.
Do you have anything you want to speak about, or do you want to wait until we get to the ballot thing?
Um, no, I really know how much. I sent out the um, some of the financials, um, the budgets that I had been working on. I don't know if you guys all had a chance to take a look at them and when do you want to schedule to finalize the budget?
Well, I was, I was, one of the things I was gonna try to do in the other business so we can do it now is to see whether or not we want to have do, do, tackle the budget at the next Select Board meeting, or do we want to have a special Zoom meeting um, and go over the budget?
I think you should probably have a separate one on its own in case you get into a lengthy discussion on something.
Okay, so then maybe what we'll do is uh, before we adjourn today, we'll, we'll pick a date for when we should have the um a special meeting. Maybe we'll do it on Thursday uh, either before Christmas or before the next meeting, either one. Whatever anybody wants to do.
Okay, um. And again, um, you guys are thinking a little bit about what's ha- gonna be happening for town meeting. Um, just, just so you know, articles need to be done by, um, I need to have them by January fourteenth. Our bill needs to have any requests for articles. Um. Also, if whoever's running for offices, those would be due January the twenty-fifth. Um, there's no more petitions that need, um, your petition doesn't need to be signed by the one per- the five percent of our voters. All I need is a consent form for people to run for offices that are due. Um. Um, I've gotten some prices for town reports. Um, last year we had News Bank because we were like scrambling to find somebody. I've gotten two prices, one from Red House Press and another one from um uh, Springfield Printing. So I'm gonna look at them a little closer tomorrow and probably pick someone to do our town reports. Um, one of the things I'm considering that I'm wondering if um, the board will be okay with it is depending on where the legislature goes with um, how town meeting's gonna go. And if we are gonna go totally Australian ballot for our, all of our articles along with our officers, um, I'm considering maybe doing the same thing as we did with the general, the presidential election, is send a ballot out to every one of our voters on our checklist. Which right now we have about five hundred and fourteen, five hundred and twelve. It'll be roughly just under five hundred dollars um, in postage to at least send out a ballot to absolutely every, every voter. Um, it'll be two separate ballots. I will do articles on one and then I would do officers on another. Um, but again, every, um, we're not gonna get any answers from the legislature until probably the beginning of January when they start meeting again and make some final decisions. And then everything's left up to the board. Whether or not we're gonna do a virtual, or are we gonna not do a town meeting whatsoever? Um. If you have any questions on any of the budget that I did send out, if you find that I um, put in um, a wrong figure because there's a lot of accounts and it's like seven to ten pages, um, let me know. I know Stan had brought up that the health officer, we talked about the the thousand and he thought it was at the twelve hundred, so I did change it. Um, the sheets that I did send out for anticipated um, was the anticipated of the, just with the um, benefits changing by one point three percent um, along with the um, hourly wages. So I can just tweak that as soon as things are finalized there. I did send you a revenue. Um, revenue is probably two to three pages. Not a whole lot you can really um, finagle on the revenue. It's mainly taking last year's and estimating what we're probably gonna get this year. Um, when I did send you the revenue sheet, the very first top line, if you remember, um, property taxes, what I end up having to do to figure that out is leave that line blank. Fill in all the other lines. Find out what I come up with for a total without using that line. And divide that into what the budget is. Or subtract it from what the budget is. And that tells me what I have to collect from the actual taxpayers. And then I go back and fill in that line. And using the one point three percent increase and everything else that we did in the budget, we would be increasing the actual collection of taxes by pro- approximately forty-one hundred dollars. That does not include uh, capital budget. That's just the general fund and the highway fund. So that's pretty good, I think. For a complete new year, so. Look those, look those over and um, just, um, I'm in the office on Tuesday and Thursday this week and probably the same next week. I have a lot of vacation time. I'm trying to take a day here and there. Um, come if you have a question on them though, and then I can look up the accounts easy that way, just like Stan gave me plenty of time to go ahead and.
Kim, I was talking to Bill today and he was telling me that some towns are, are suspending the humanitarian articles.
Uh, I've been getting some um, on the Muni net that we talked back and forth, there, some are suspending them, some of them are keeping them the same, and they're not taking on any new requests. It, they're, they're freezing it as is. Um, some of them just aren't even gonna do humanitarians this year. So it's all, it's all up to the Select Board because the Select Board is the, is essentially the one that um, accepts any articles or requests for funding.
So I, so I guess that's something we need to consider on the final budget meeting that we have for the year, you know?
Yep, yep.
So what happens to the organizations that rely on the towns for, for funding?
Well, if, if you're not gonna do any humanitarians, then that would be every one of those in there you would not be giving to them.
Yes.
Or you could leave them as they are and they are included in the budget that I just worked out. Just we wouldn't accept new ones. So you can, and and actually, I believe everything that I did in the budget right now included last year's new article, which was sevens. So that's why the humanitarian article has moved from nine thousand seven forty-one up to eleven thousand something. Because I have to add um, sevens into it. Um, I did notice though that there was a request that I wasn't aware of for a thousand dollars. That's not in the budget for years I just proposed to you the other day.
Well, Stan, I guess to answer your question, if you, if the town decides not to give the humanitarian articles, then those organizations are not funded.
Right.
I mean, that's, you know, it's kind of a harsh thing, but I'm, I mean, I guess that's the, the end result. I'm not suggesting we should or shouldn't. I'm just, I bring it up so that people can be thinking about this as we're going.
Well, that was, that was my thought. I mean, if, if, you know, you just hold it back for whatever reason, then the the people that rely on healthcare or visiting nurses and that doesn't.
Yeah, take a good look at what's, uh, everything is listed in your last town report as to what's in those humanitarian articles and how much they each get. Um, before you make any decision. Um, the requests have been coming in though for the same ones we have. And like I said, we've gotten a couple new ones.
Mr. Chair, this is Suzanne. May I ask a question?
Sure.
This um, the idea of reducing our humanitarian uh, funding in one of the worst years for hardship for people that we've ever had seems counterintuitive to me. And with the excellent job that Kim has done in managing the overall increase um, uh, to taxpayers of forty-one hundred dollars, it seems like we should be able to fund eleven thousand dollars worth of humanitarian aid during this crisis.
Well, Suzanne, I don't think anybody has, has, has made any decision. I, I bring it up just so that the Select Board knows what's happening in other towns. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to do it or we want to do it, so. But I think your comments are well taken.
Good, thank you.
And and then we also have the capital budget that's gonna play a role in, in part of what our tax, taxes are gonna be or our budget's gonna be too. Um, so that's not included in there and we we know that's gonna probably be a little bit of an increase. Um, like I said, the um, the state has talked also about education. Tax rate is a possible nine percent increase on that overall for every town. I, I don't know how true that is. I haven't heard anything more about it, but so. Um, that's about all I have for right now. Um, Wendy has been doing an excellent job is getting us um, up to speed on our land records being online under Record Hub. I've had some researchers that have been using it and referred them to it. Um, I think she's already back to book thirty-seven and I'm, right now I'm at sixty, so from thirty-seven, I'm sorry, forty-seven.
Thirty-six today.
So from forty-seven to sixty, um, we're online. So it's coming along really, really good. Michelle's helping out as much as she can and um, Michelle's working a lot on the town report too.
Anybody have any more questions for Kim? Well, keep up the good work, Kim. I mean, you guys are doing a good job there, so. All right, the listeners, you're, you're on, Hardy.
Okay. About the reappraisal. All homes have been, had pictures taken, been measured and listed for all of their exterior features. However, we have reached the uh, point where we're not gonna be able to do any internal inspections, it appears in the near future. And possibly the only time it could be done will be four or five months later in the grievance process. Consequently, the plan is to complete the information gathering process by NEMC. They will be using a data mailer to capture the internal features of each property. Plan is to send the mailer out in early January to all property owners who have had parcels with buildings on them and then process the returns. We are still on track to mail preliminary values in early May two thousand twenty-one with individual hearings on values through May. So we are still on track and uh, to proceed with the reappraisal and we're gonna try to get some of this information into the Grafton news so that people are aware of the mailer that they will be receiving. And basically, the mailer will be individualized with data that we presently have on file for each property. In other words, in two thousand and nine, we knew how many bathrooms most houses had, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So people will be getting that information and be asked to either confirm or change it. Uh, any questions?
So, so basically, this packet is gonna come to each homeowner and they're going to say, okay, I have three bathrooms and, and on the packet it says I have one bathroom, so. They're going to, and the honest system tell you what they really have or what is wrong, correct?
That's uh, what it's gonna be. Other than the people that have already were there when the, when the appraiser visited, many of them gave out the information at that time. So, so it's not a hundred percent that we don't know what inside most properties. It's just the ones where nobody was there when the appraiser visited and uh, didn't talk to anybody.
Any more questions for Hardy? Not. Hardy, the, the next thing is the School Advisory Committee update.
Okay, um. The Westminster uh, special vote on the withdrawal from the Unifying District is set for January fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Grafton and Athens cannot make any concrete plans really until the result of this vote is known. If it's a no, everything is a moot point. If yes, a date for the same day town vote to allow or not allow the withdrawal must be set by the Select Board. And I would ask Bill to define probably when that could, could occur. But most likely, it's probably gonna go out till like the town meeting day. What do you think, Bill?
Most likely. It isn't that simple as Jack outlined. It has to go, it goes to the Secretary of State who then informs Athens and Grafton that, that uh, the result of Westminster's vote. And if, if it was a yes, net it from then. And I, I think it's a thirty day notice. But uh, it, it'll be, we'll be lucky if we can get it in uh, at, on that time. And it'd be really, it's, we got to get it on, the best way to do it is get it on the articles and that, that's gonna be really hard, I think. If, if Kim's still on, I think that's the way to do it.
Yes, and if it's January fourteenth, that could be quite difficult. The articles have to be in by January fourteenth.
No, they have to be in by, well, yeah, you're right. Yeah, well, no, they have to be in. They won't be posted till after that. We could, if, if we know the result of the vote that day, but, well, first of all, we can write the, the article before and have it ready to go. And if we know the end of vote that day, we can send that to the printer with all the rest of the articles. So it, it isn't impossible to do, but it would be town meeting.
Okay, so that's, that's where we are on the meeting side of it.
Do you have any sense, Hardy, on Westminster's feelings?
Um, not really, no. Um. Regarding the Advisory Committee, projected financial information on a merger divorce is yet available for anybody to review. So basically, nothing is available to report on as there's been no activity. My biggest concern right now is how a fact finding committee can function when the only way they can communicate with each other is by a warned Zoom meeting. I do not think the organizational structure is workable of three people. For as an example, I haven't talked to one of the other committee meetings yet because I've been told I can't because of the open meeting law. I sent them every email that I've received and basically, that's where we are so far. I believe you need to appoint a five person committee where at any time, at least two people can communicate and talk to each other about possible courses of action. Possibly even two people just from the Select Board or however you want to do it. But I don't see a three man committee working in this situation.
I think Hardy, didn't you have?
Did I talk with Jack about that? He agreed with me and I, I, and I talked with Bill and I think he's in agreement too.
And Hardy, you had a, you had a proposal for the members, right?
I would, I would think it would be Joe and Kathy.
Well, I mean, what, I, I have no problem with that. I mean, I don't know about Kathy, but I mean, if, if, if we need to play a, a part in this uh, this school fiasco, I'm willing to spend the time to do it.
Because basically, I don't see anything getting done. I, I mean, I can't talk with uh, I don't even know whether the other two members still want to do it. And, and I don't, because I can't communicate with them and I don't know whether Bill has, I doubt it. You know, it's uh.
Well, Kathy, are you willing to do this? Are you smiling now? I can see.
I, I mean, I don't see as, as the other, if you come on the committee, I don't know that you have to do anything if you don't want to. At least you're a person on the committee, okay?
Oh, no. Yeah, but we have not had any meetings. I mean, I've communicated with some of the Westminster folks email uh, when they wanted to do um, you know, school through the computer. I gave them a lot of suggestions, but that's about it. I didn't, they're not really communicating what they want.
Hmm.
Or how to do it. It's, it's a. or how to do it. It's a dilemma, I think. I mean.
Well, basically, it seems to me that what Grafton has to do is to advise the select board whether we feel, the committee, that it's a good thing for Grafton people to vote on and do and recommend. You know, I don't know whether it is or not.
If we can get the information, the pros and the cons about it, and the financial piece.
That's the key.
Working on the financial piece.
Yes.
No, I'm willing to help it because I know the school fairly well because I sub there.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I'll do my part. I just want to make sure we can get everybody together on how to do it, to get them together.
Well, I guess what you're saying, Hardy, is that if Kathy and I join this committee, at least you have two people to talk to.
I can talk to either you, Kathy, Chris, or, and find out what their thoughts are. Right now, I don't know what anybody's thoughts.
So I don't have a problem with that.
I'll make that motion that we add Joe and Kathy to that group.
That would be a committee of five, is that correct?
Yes.
I'll second it.
I think it's, I think, to me, I think the reason why I have no problem with it, I think it's very important for the town of Grafton to understand if we can withdraw, is it really to our best advantages and what can we do? I think it's an important part for the town. And I think the only way you're going to do this is to do the research.
So Hardy, is it Jessica and Rachel, the other two members?
No, well, Jessica is on the school board. The other two members are Chris Wallace and Rachel Plummer.
Right. It's our committee, Kathy, that we had set up or advisory board that we set up last, I don't know, whenever it was, spring, fall, or whatever.
And Jack has been sending out emails and Jessica sent out an email. I forwarded those to Chris and Rachel, but I haven't talked with him about it and I can afford them to you. I think Joe has received most of them.
Yeah, I get most of them.
And I don't know, you probably have not.
No, I haven't.
Okay, I can send you some of them, what I have for background. But I talked with Jack the day before yesterday and he has been working or trying to get the lady down at the, at the school in Bellas Falls, the administrator person, to come up with the budget data. I have looked at some of the old budget data and, you know, what the tax rate implications were before we went into this union and what they were right after we actually had to go into the union and obviously it was an increase and I can figure out what that was. But I need to also know, get from the budget administrator down there, what the headcounts look like and what they're going to look like in the future because that's a really key part of this analysis. Is the equalized headcount which determines what your cost per pupil is. And that's really the key. So I'm trying to get that data. So that's my next step is to try to contact her and to get, see where I can get her historical data out of her. And she's new on the job, I believe.
Well, that's very important for the committee to get this financial information. Otherwise, you're a plus line, so to speak.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm trying to do is get that, get some data.
All right, so then we have a motion on the floor. We have any further discussion? If not, all in favor of Alan's motion? Alan, you might want to restate it?
My motion is to add Kathy, Siano, and Joe Palio to the advisory committee that Chris, Rachel, and Hardy are already on.
All in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
No one opposed? Okay. All righty. Well, Kathy, you and I will be working harder. Okay, so the number eight is the COVID policy that we all received a copy of that Stan and Rich worked on. Stan, you want to say anything about it or anybody have some comments?
Pretty much. I mean, there it is. I gave it to Bill to comment on. And so it's pretty much just the way it was, so I don't really have too much to offer. There it is.
Oh, just a second. I'll put it up.
I mean, it's pretty basic. I mean, it sort of just includes everyone without saying a lot.
Well, I think it does the jobs, quite frankly, but that's my opinion.
I'm not sure. Did I get it up? I don't think I did.
No.
Okay, wait a second. Huh, wait a second.
Everybody should have a.
I don't even see it. But everybody, everybody should have it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I read it. I mean, I assume everybody read it. It was some time ago, I think, last week or whatever. Somebody want to make a motion to accept it or somebody want to discuss it that they like it or don't like it or something here so we can move on?
I'll make motion to accept it.
Second.
Alan, you second it?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's, I think personally, I think it covers all businesses. It's exactly what we're doing and it gives the guidance, if the guidance changes, then we change. You know, it's, I mean, I think it covers us and I think it's, should be in the paper and sent to the other businesses and whatever so everybody knows. So if there's no further discussion, everybody in favor of the Grafton, Contra Grafton COVID nineteen policy, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. All right, Bill, you going to run this in the paper maybe with the?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah. And then, I don't know, maybe give copies to the foundation in the garage and and the other businesses in town maybe and so they would have it.
Okay, and it'll be on the website too.
Yeah, I'll put it on the website. Okay, the next thing is this.
May I just ask a quick question? What, I don't remember, but I could have just missed it. Was that policy made available prior to the meeting tonight for the public review?
I'm pretty sure that it was out there, but I don't know, I can't remember, Suzanne. It's been, we've had it in our possession for about two months, so I really don't know what I did with it, though.
Thank you.
The next thing is this, the thing that's going to take place in town meeting day is this Australian ballot. What do we, we need to do something, I guess.
Didn't Kim sort of already buzz through that when she made her comment?
No. The new law, no, the new law says if you're, you can use Australian ballot at the town meeting. Provided that sixty days before the town meeting, the select board declares that that will be the method of voting at the town meeting. And therefore, that's why I wrote it out. Sixty days before is December thirtieth. Most people probably think they have until early January, like the first meeting in January. You do not. And not if you want to make the town meeting. So you guys got to do, because there's only twenty-eight days in February. So you guys got to do it tonight or next week. And it doesn't mean anything if the COVID goes away and there's no longer an emergency because then it no longer applies because the law says it only applies if there's an emergency. But this is the way we would vote and you need to do it sixty days before the meeting if in fact you need to do it that way.
But Bill, I thought it's thirty days. They've changed that.
No, they are thinking of changing it. They did not change it.
I'll check my notes that I got on Friday of last week, but I thought it was thirty days.
But what is the difference, Kim? If we approve it, even if we approved it now and then the things change, we're not obligated. We can go back to the old way.
Exactly, yeah.
So I mean.
I just don't, I just don't want you to feel rushed.
Well, I mean, but it's better to be rushed and then find yourself that you're in a pickle.
Yeah, I mean, definitely if you want to. I just didn't want you to feel like you had to be rushed. I didn't. I'll check it out again tomorrow when I get to work.
But I don't think we really have a choice here, do we?
I don't think so.
No, I think we just should, let's, I'd make a motion that we move with this Australian ballot for town meeting day.
Would you make the motion that's quoted there in the agenda?
Do I have to?
Yeah. It's very legal.
Just make, it's within quotation marks, as presented.
Yeah.
All right, let me see where they go. I see where they end. I don't see where the beginning. I'll just read the whole thing.
Well, you don't need to read it. Just say as presented in the.
Oh, okay, yeah, so I'll make the motion that we, for Australian ballot, presented on the agenda on the December seventh meeting.
Yeah, that's all you need to do. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alan, second it? Do we have any other discussion? If not, all in favor of Stan's motion to do the Australian ballot if necessary, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Okay, Kim, so whether it's thirty days or not, doesn't really make much difference as long as we comply and as long as COVID restrictions still are here and then this is how we do it, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. The next item is the discussion of the policy and the potential select board meeting with the Wyndham County Sheriff. I know there's a few people who wanted to put this on the agenda, so. Speak up.
The main reason for it being on the agenda is, do you want me to set up a meeting, even if it has to be a special meeting, or do you want him to come to a meeting? We could do it on the twenty-first. I don't want to take a chance that that meeting is going to be packed because it's almost the end of the year and we do know we're going to have a public hearing on the town plan. That shouldn't take long and that's going to start, but that's going to be for the first thing at six o'clock. So do you want to have a special meeting with him or can I see, you want me to see if he can attend the select board meeting? And have him, you guys visit with him right at the beginning or do you want to meet him? The other thing is, do you want to appoint a committee and have them meet with him and talk to this stuff?
I would like to see it done as with a full select board. So it's open, available, full select board, not a subcommittee then the select. I don't really care when we do it, whether we do it a special meeting or not, but I'd like it to be done with a full board.
Yeah, I agree with Alan.
I agree.
I do too.
So when do you want to do it? Do you want to do it, do you want to do it at the next one or do it in January? I mean, there's no rush to do it. I mean, you've got a contract. He's here. The question is, you know, I guess the reason is, let's figure out how to best use him and what we want to do with him.
I'd say do it the first meeting in January.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Yep.
That would be January fourth, I believe.
Okay, I will try to set it for the fourth. If I can't get him the fourth, I'll do it at the next meeting, okay? Because I don't know his schedule. Okay.
Okay, we could always, we could always have a special meeting too, I mean, if that's necessary, so. Not that everybody needs to do that. All right, so we'll see what happens on the fourth. Bill will keep us informed. The reason for the Christmas gift is, I don't, I'm not sure how the Christmas gift got.
Skip tonight.
What did I do?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
No. I talked to Kim and two years ago, we gave gift certificates to the five employees for fifty dollars and last year it was the fifty-five dollars. And then Don Lawrence got a smaller gift certificate. I believe it was either twenty or twenty-five dollars. And that was locally to the Grafton store to get his coffee and paper. And since he's not there this year, you might want to extend that to Walter since he's kind of assumed his job. Alan and I had talked at one of our personnel meetings and we talked about maybe a bonus and whatever to the employees. And maybe this is the time we give them, rather than a fifty-dollar gift, fifty-five-dollar gift certificate, we give the employees a hundred-dollar gift certificate as kind of a bonus for working through the virus and all that kind of stuff. I don't know how everybody feels about it, but that was just a suggestion that Alan and I had and that's why it's on the agenda.
We discussed, we discussed it and I would make a motion that we do the hundred dollars to start the discussion.
And this would be in food?
Hundred, hundred dollars for five and fifty for Walter.
Who does that include, Alan?
It would include the three highway, Kim, Bill, and Michelle. There would be hundred each and fifty for Walt.
Okay.
That's, that's the proposal or.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I just think it's kind of appropriate to some say thank you to those folks that, you know, a lot of people just stayed home during the virus and they, they worked through it and kept, they were key and very important to keep in the town running and so I, as a select board person, I'd like to say thank you and think that's the way to do it.
You wouldn't consider the same amount for Walter?
No, I think, he's not a year-round person, so half, and fifty percent is sort of, he isn't even a fifty percent if you look at number of hours, so that's, that's why I thought a lesser amount because he doesn't work the same number of hours as the others.
Kathy, if you go by tradition, over the years, Don Lawrence always got whatever, half the bonus, half of the bonus that the other employees got. So traditionally, that's how it's been. I mean, it doesn't mean you can't change it, but that's why it was done that way.
Okay, understood.
And just so that everybody knows, unless you have another, another thought, it was at the Leesize Market in Bellas Falls that the gift certificate was there that they could buy food for the holidays or whatever else they wanted to buy.
We didn't do it at the Grafton store?
Traditionally, it was always done at Leesize Market. Yeah, I don't know why.
It didn't done in Chester, I know, too. Chester's Leesize.
It was, Leesize doesn't own it anymore in Chester, but I mean, you know, but.
We had taken, we had taken a poll of the employees that received it and most of them all used Leesize Market. So that's why we pretty much just kind of all congregated and did Leesize Market.
Unless you want to give them an option.
No.
Leesize in Bellas Falls or what would now be, what's the one in Chester?
No, Leesize, Bellas Falls, because it's no longer Leesize Chester. It's Smitty's now.
Well, I know, but I just wanted to make sure when Kim says Leesize, we're referring to actually that, that place in Bellas Falls.
Yeah, it's the one in Bellas Falls.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Are we leaving anybody else?
Those are the only employees we have.
What about the assistant town clerk or the one that does the payrolls and stuff like that?
Michelle, she's included.
Payroll, and she's included.
Well, I didn't hear her name when I asked who was included.
Yeah, I did, I did say Michelle.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, okay, fine.
You can have a comment on that? Kim, you there?
Who, me?
Oh, I'm sorry, what was, what was that?
John was asking, what about the assistant treasurer, or whatever?
Yeah, Michelle, she was included in that, so it would be the three crew members, Bill, myself, and Michelle would be the sixth, and then Walter would be the half seventh.
Does that satisfy you, John, or you still have a question?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, I guess the next one is the update on the municipal worker virtual cast there, webcast. Alan, you want to discuss this, and Bill, you, Bill did go and listen to it, so if you have any other questions, Bill, you can chime in.
No, I listened to the, to the emergency management web, the next day, not, I didn't go to this one.
Okay. So go ahead, Alan.
So I attended a webinar, it was provided, and the target group was municipal workers, so those in attendance, some, many of them were road foremen, and then there was some, you know, like select board, that's a town administrator, that sort of thing. It acts, the idea actually, I think, started, or at least I prompted a little bit, I asked Stu Johnson from the AOT, who's kind of the lead person with Better Back Roads, you know, I see stuff on the State Emergency Operations Center, talking about all different things, ski lifts, policies, this, that, and other things, I said, well, I don't see anything there for road, road crew, and so, that's kind of what got it, and he said he'd actually been thinking of doing it. So there was Ted Brady, who was the deputy of the CD, there was a representative from the department, and also from the Vermont leagues of cities and towns. Started off with kind of an update, and then broke into a question and answer period, and if you had an issue that you wanted dealt with, you had the opportunity to tell them, I'd like you to look into this, or do that, and it was, I think, a worthwhile meeting, and it's also where you're going to make sure that you hear about an update or a change in state policies that are out there. I think it's worth making sure that we participate. I think, like a lot of things, that it's good to have somebody that's your person that's expected to do that, and if they have a conflict, or sick, or away, then they need to find somebody to fill in for them. I would like to see that we ask Bill to do it, as the administrator, emergency management director, but if he can't do it, then somebody else needs to step up, but I think it was worthwhile.
Good, Alan, thanks for attending.
Yeah, and I have, I've talked to Bill, and I said to Bill that he would, he would listen to any, any future ones to keep us up to date, and to make sure that our policies are being, you know, adhered to, and we're doing the right thing for our employees, so.
It was kind of helpful, you know, when they got to the discussion of, when they were talking about working with contractors, and so I was able to share with, because some of the towns were behind us in the discussion process, and I was able to share with them what we had done, and what we had talked about, you know, concerns with driving trucks that are rather uniquely set up, and different, and the concern of if one of those trucks was in an accident, how special they are, that, you know, you might be without a truck for a year, and so those were things people hadn't thought about yet. So, it's that sort of thing that propped up in the question and answer period, and I thought it was good.
Other business? I have just one thing, we need to pick a date, when you want to do the budget, whether you want to do it next meeting, which is the 21st, or do you want to do it either, we're certainly not going to do it on the 24th and Christmas Eve, but do you want to do it on the 17th, or do you want to do it another day, or early January? What is everybody's thoughts? That would be by, by Microsoft team.
Let's go with the 17th.
Works for me. Is everybody okay with the 17th?
Are you talking about December 17th?
Correct.
That's Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah.
What time?
We'll do it like 9:30 in the morning.
Give time again, give it to me again? Show the time?
At 9:30, if everybody agrees, like we did it before. We won't kill the whole day. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Stan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, okay, so let's put it down on 12/17 as the final budget meeting, and we can go over the capital budget, or budgets, or whatever else we need to do. Okay, any other business?
Yeah, I've got, I've got one thing, up on the town green, up by the white church up there, there's an old rusty flag pole. We ought to either put a sawzall to the base of it and get rid of it, it's, it's pretty firmly in there, I don't know if we have to dig it out, but it'd be nice to at least get rid of it. If we're going to have a flag pole, I think we ought to do it right. I mean, this thing, it's just an old rusted six-foot steel pole sticking out of the ground.
I agree.
We ought to just go up there and cut it off, maybe sometime, we ought to make a motion, and actually, if we're going to do a flag pole, we ought to do a flag pole and do it right, but let's get rid of what's up there, it's ugly.
Is it sound enough if you could use it and just put a newer one over the top of it, so you could utilize the concrete, or whatever's already in the ground, or is it not, is it past that stage?
No, that thing is just a homeowner's flag pole. They took down part of it because it was all messed up anyways, they ought to just take it out.
So, we took the top of it off, that's probably been gone now a couple years, but the base of it's still sitting there, I think six feet tall. I mean, if we're going to put a pole over it, I think it's a great idea, as long as we do it right, if we're not going to do it right, let's not do it.
I agree.
Are they putting a flag on it now, or not?
Only six feet, it's only six feet tall.
It's, 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 it's gone.
I think Walter has the rest of it.
Well, he's the one I asked to take it, take it off.
Want it gone, or take it out tomorrow?
Yeah, put a sawzall to it.
It looks terrible there, we'll just take it out.
The objection to take it out?
Take it out.
Take it out, Danny.
Hey, it'll happen tomorrow.
And then maybe, let's put it on the agenda, and we can figure out, and let's, do we really want to have a flag pole in town, and where should we put it?
I mean, that, that pole of them is pretty soft, I don't know if you actually have to dig it out, it's probably just a sawzall to the base of it would be just as, just as easy.
Yeah, we'll make it so it don't look like it's there, one way or the other.
Right, yeah.
Any other business?
I have a thought. I'm wondering if at the end of a meeting, it would be worth to brainstorm items that need to be on future agendas. I know the process, that it goes out Wednesday, or maybe Thursday, and we're supposed to look at it and ask to have this on, or that on. If you happen to miss it, then it doesn't, doesn't happen. I'm just wondering if it, if we could, you know, hey, I'm thinking we need this, I think we need this, that way, if there needs to be some research, or some prep, if somebody's got it Thursday, and does not work Friday, well, it goes out Thursday, but he doesn't have, might not have a chance to do research for it, so I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile as kind of standard procedure, at the end of a meeting, we maybe have ideas of things we'd like to see on the agenda, or particularly if there's something, we don't bring closure, and we say, yeah, we need to talk about that again next week, next meeting, just a thought.
I disagree, because you don't have to approve the agenda on Wednesday. Tomorrow is Tuesday. If you have a thought, and you want to put something on the agenda, all you got to do is talk to Bill, and he will put it on the agenda, and then when the agenda goes out on a Wednesday, if everybody likes it, you can have it. You don't have to wait until Wednesday before the meeting, the Thursday before it's posted, you can go on the agenda anytime. It's, it's, it's no reason to spend more time discussing something that you have the option to do it right now, anyway, just, you want something on the agenda, we'll put it on. Simple. Any other business? If not, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Suzanne, I'd like to make a public comment, please.
Sure.
So on December 3rd, on Saturday, we had Christmas in Grafton, and despite the rain and the pandemic, it was really a magical event. This was the first time that the newly formed Visit Grafton, Vermont Association led and put together this celebration, and it included all of the lamp posts being decorated, and some of them have cards associated with honors and memories of various people in Grafton that were donated by people in Grafton. The five people who did the work, most of the work, I just wanted to acknowledge to the select board, Angela Comstock, June Lubiani, Craig Douglas, Amber Stevens, and Kevin Wool. And I think these lamp posts being decorated during the entire holiday season will provide this kind of lasting picture postcard look of Grafton, and bring us all cheer in a time that could otherwise be pretty dark, so therefore, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge their work, and thank them very much for it.
I agree, I think it was great. It was, it's a real, it has a real, kind of nice touch to the town. Any other business? If not, the next meeting is on Monday, December 21st, at 6 o'clock via Microsoft team.
And the first part of that meeting is the public hearing on the town plan, and then followed by the, by the meeting, immediately after the public hearing.
Correct. Okay, guys, thank you, we need a motion to adjourn?
Almost.
I don't know who did it, but.
Everybody.
Everybody wants adjourned, so.
Pick a name.
For everybody, anyway. Well, thank you, everybody, and stay safe.